And call this meeting to order. Would anyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Okay, and good morning, everyone.
Morning, Mayor.
Morning.
All right, we are here for a zoning meeting, and let's go and take away Audrey.
Thank you. We have one ordinance. I'll read the title block into the record. This is a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a request to amend the North Bay Village Commercial Plan Development to amend tract R of the Master Concept Plan, Schedule of Uses, and Requested Deviations to allow up to 108 multifamily units not to exceed 35 feet on land located at 26355 and 26375 North Bay Village Parkway, Benita Springs, Florida. On 12 more or less acres, providing for an effective date. This is the second reading of the ordinance. The affidavit of publication is on file with the city clerk. At this time, Jackie Gensen will provide a brief history of the case.
Hey Jackie.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. For the record, Jacqueline Gensen with Community Development. This request is to amend an existing CPD to allow for multifamily in the back tract of the development, known as tract R. So the applicant and staff will be going over that in detail for you. We went ahead and heard the case. Staff did recommend approval with conditions. The zoning board heard the case, and they also recommended approval with slight modification to the conditions. And with that, I'll go over some of those changes and some of the concerns that were brought up at zoning board during my presentation. But at this point, the applicant would like to go ahead with their presentation.
Okay, thank you. Chuck, you ready to go? All right. Not hurrying yet, but... But I guess, never mind.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Charles Bassinet. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Henderson Franklin Sterns and Holt in Fort Myers. I'm here representing the applicant before you this morning in the North Bay Village zoning amendment. With me today is Brandon Lory, the General Real Estate Corporation owner, Tom McLean, an engineer with Holmontes, Paula McMichael, planner with Holmontes, Bill Prysey, Land Architects, Inc., Ted Trish, TR Transportation Consultants, Inc., and Bethany Brochus, Passerell and Associates. Our presentation is going to be, or rather, will not incorporate all of those experts. We intend to have Paula McMichael come up as the planning expert, and when she completes her presentation, we're going to ask that Ted Trish and Tom McLean come up and talk to you briefly about transportation and some water management issues on the site. As I said, we have Bethany Brochus here also, who is our environmental expert. I don't think there's any particular environmental issues out there, but certainly if anyone has questions, she's here. She's available to answer questions for you. I think it's important to note that presently we have entitlements approved, which allow us to build 112 units, four more units than what we are asking for today, in four buildings, four stories tall, maximum 50 feet. At one point, we had an approved development order for this project, and it is our understanding that we could resurrect this deal if we so desired. However, the development intention is moving from a vertical footprint to a more horizontal footprint. As I said, the current footprint is four buildings, 50 feet high, with approximately 28 units in each building. What the intention is, is to move to a more horizontal project, which is going to be 17 buildings, much smaller, six to seven units apiece, two-story, 35 feet. I would suggest to you that the present proposal to go to two-story is much more conducive, much more compatible with the adjacent residential in this area. Obviously, though, while there are more buildings under the proposal before you today, each building is much smaller, as I said, and we believe much more compatible. We have reviewed the staff report, and we are in agreement with the staff's recommendations of approval for both the rezoning request and the requested deviations. We are also in agreement with the zoning board's recommendation of approval on this matter. In addition, we do not object to the staff conditions as revised at the zoning board hearing with the exception of condition 9B. What I'd like to do is just read 9B into the record first, and then I have a few comments about it, if you don't mind. 9B indicates or states as follows: If required by FDOT, applicant will submit a... Excuse me. Applicant... Sorry. Will submit a turn lane analysis evaluating the turning movements at North Bay Village Drive and US 41, period. If a turn lane is required, the applicant shall be responsible for the cost of the design, construction, and installation of the turn lane as a site-related improvement. Essentially, what I'm going to be asking for today is to modify that condition... Pardon me. To reflect that any payments under that condition be proportionate share payments. In other words, presently, the property owner for... Or the applicant in the zoning case before you today is responsible, or will be responsible, for about 20% of the turns at that turning lane, once the multifamily residential project is constructed. It seems patently unfair that that person be put on the hook, if you will, for 100% of the cost of building that turn lane. And I'd like you to note just a couple of things. One is that in the front part of the site, where the Robin Stuckey Furniture Store used to be, that store was converted sometime ago, a year, maybe a year and a half ago, to the Hertz Office Building. The traffic, because of that, was increased about threefold over what it used to be under the furniture store. Moreover, traffic in the back, that used to be 100,000 square foot office area, that is now being built, or being proposed to be built, as 108 multifamily units, and previously was 112 multifamily units. Suffice it to say that the traffic being generated, or that will be generated by those multifamily structures, are about half of what it used to be in terms of the 100,000 square foot office building. Moreover, we had a development order approved on this site at 112 units, and no turn lane was required at the time. So I'm going to suggest to you that it's patently unfair to put my client in the position of having to pay for the entirety of a turn lane, when in fact, his development will generate about 20% of the trips that use that particular access point. He is certainly willing and obligated, I believe, to pay his proportionate share of that cost, whatever that is. And we haven't done a thorough study on that yet, and we need to run that through the city, obviously. But whatever that percentage of use is, then certainly he's willing to pay that proportionate share. He's not looking for impact fee credits for that, but he's willing to pay his proportionate share. So I would ask that this condition be modified to reflect that the applicant, if a turn lane is required, and that still is something that's not assured, but if a turn lane is required, then the applicant will pay his proportionate share. You will also hear from our planning expert regarding a number of enhancements that we have made to the master concept plan as a result of the hearing in front of the zoning board. We have tried to add some additional sidewalk connections. We've added some traffic calming measures within the development itself. There's been a fence that's been proposed along the preserve area. And there's a number of other enhancements, if you will, but our planning expert will go through those in some detail during the course of her testimony. We will be using a PowerPoint in connection with this presentation. I have handed a copy, a hard copy, to all of you prior to the hearing. I've given copies to the court reporter, your attorney, and the minutes clerk, along with copies of the disc in addition to that. I've also handed out to each person a copy of the master concept plan on 11 by 17. We have it on a board. It's also part of our PowerPoint. I'm going to ask that the PowerPoint and the master concept plan that I've handed out be entered in as applicants exhibit one and two, respectively, and that they be accepted into evidence. Audrey, is there anything else I need to do there in terms of this? At this time, I would like our planning expert Paula McMichael to come up. And as I said, when Paula completes her testimony, I'm going to ask Tom Leonard... Tom Leonard, I'm sorry. Tom McLean to come up. I'm never going to hear the end of that.
Not yet. Not in here. Outside.
I'm going to ask Mr. McLean to come up and explain for you the water management system on the site. I'm then going to ask Ted Trish, our traffic expert, to come up and talk to you a little bit about the traffic issues that it has to do with the traffic signal at US 41 and Lime Tree Level of Service, and some other matters. Once that's completed, as I said, that's our case in chief, unless you have questions of our environmental expert, or if you have questions of our other experts, we'll be happy to try and answer them for you. We appreciate your patience, and thank you for the opportunity to present to you this morning.
Good morning.
Hello.
Again, my name is Paula McMichael. I'm a certified planner with the firm of Holmontes. I'm going to be walking you through the application this morning and our request. Just start with the project location. This is a 12-acre site. This is vacant parcel here. This is Highland Woods Golf and Country Club to the east. This is the terraces to the south. 41 Lime Tree Park Drive. This is North Bay Village, the commercial portion, the Hertz building, Bonefish Grill down here. I'm sure plenty of you have been there. As was already mentioned, the zoning for the site is commercial plan development. The CPD includes the commercial portion adjacent to 41. And again, Highland Woods, the terraces, and this is one of the entrances to Benita Bay across 41. Go pretty quickly through the zoning history on the site. It was first rezoned by Lee County in 1995 to commercial plan development. And then in 2005, the city of Benita Springs approved a special exception for the site that approved 112 multifamily units in four four-story buildings on the 12-acre portion of the site. And this just shows you the current approval for the site. So again, 41 Lime Tree Park Drive, the commercial portion. This is the entrance into the site, the existing stormwater management lakes. And then we have the four multifamily buildings. And this hatched area in the back is the preserve, and there's also preserves along in there. Again, we're requesting to amend the existing North Bay Village CPD. We're still proposing multifamily units, as was approved in 2005. But as Chuck mentioned, we've changed the design from the more vertically intrusive 50-foot buildings to a two-story townhouse-style development. And that does make it more compatible with Highland Woods, single-family homes to the east, and Lime Tree Park to the north. So we are reducing the number of multifamily units from 112 to 108. Again, we're changing from four multifamily buildings at four stories to 17 multifamily buildings at two stories. The minimum required preserve acreage for the 12-acre site is 2.4 acres, and we're providing 2.44 acres. So we're maintaining the mix of commercial and residential in the CPD. And again, that two-story residential will be more compatible with the existing surrounding uses. The highest quality habitat within the preserve will continue to be protected. And we have an enhanced landscape design to ensure visual harmony and enhanced buffers to promote compatibility with the existing residential neighborhoods. So this is our proposed master concept plan, and there's a lot of detail on this plan. That's why we also handed out the 11 by 17s. All this text on the left, a lot of the details on how the project meets the requirements of the code. And we'll go through those in more detail later. Again, this is 41 Lime Tree Park Drive, existing commercial. This is the entrance into the multifamily. So you can either come through Lime Tree Park Drive to the north, and you can't see it on this aerial, but North Bay Village Drive to the south. So these are the existing stormwater management lakes. This is a gated entry into the site. So you can see we have the 17 two-story buildings. This is a loop road. There's a cul-de-sac at the north end, loop road. There's an amenity center in the middle. This is a pool and clubhouse. These sort of spidery-looking things are the sidewalks. And we've also made some changes since zoning board, as Chuck mentioned. So one of those was to add these sidewalks. We've also added elevated crosswalks. So they're elevated paver crosswalks as a form of traffic calming.
Paula, I'm sorry, can you point out where those elevated crosswalks are? So there's a number of those internal to the project, is there not?
Yes.
And you mentioned sidewalks. Was there a connection made from the sidewalks in this project to the sidewalks in the project in the front?
So we have added this sidewalk here along the south side of the entrance road, so that people can walk easily. You know, if they want to have dinner up here, they can walk.
And does that connect to a sidewalk in the commercial project?
Yes. You can see this is a sidewalk here. And we also have a detail on that elevated crosswalk down there. And then, it's a little easier to see on this exhibit. This is the property boundary for the 12 acres. These areas here are preserves that are associated with the commercial portion of the site.
Are those preserves going to change at all?
No.
All right, thank you.
And this is our preserve to the east. And you'll see there's two different hatchings. This section of the preserve is part of our water management system. And the area to the north has been excluded from the water management system, so that's about the two different hatchings.
And is there a fence that's been added?
Yes. Again, as part of the concerns that we heard at the zoning board, we've added a 42-inch, three-and-a-half-foot fence between our buildings and the preserve, and that runs from lake to lake. So adjacent to all preserves, even if they're not part of our property, there will be a fence between the buildings and the preserve.
And the purpose of the fence is?
The purpose of the fence... And we'll talk about this more as we go through the deviations. We are requesting a reduced setback to the preserve. So the code would require 30 feet, and we're asking for 15 feet. And the way the code reads that is for fire protection, to protect the buildings from possible fire within your preserve. But we did hear the concern at zoning board that that 30 feet also provides some protection to the preserve from residents encroaching into that preserve. So in order to address that, we've added that fence. So it's a structural barrier that will exceed the minimum code requirements.
Were there any changes made to the guest parking?
Yes. As part of adding these additional sidewalks to the site, we reworked the guest parking. So along in here, these used to be 90-degree spaces, and they're now parallel spaces. And we also have some parallel spaces there. And the same to the south here. These were 90-degree spaces, and they're now parallel spaces.
Were we able to increase the number of guest spaces? And if you don't know the answer to that question, that's fine.
I know there are 16 spaces along the roadway, and we also added an additional space for each building.
All right, I'll just have Mr. McLean go through that. Was there more green space added as a result of the reallocation of the parking?
So we picked up a little bit more green space in here, as again, they were 90-degree spaces, and they're now parallel spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Now for the exciting portion of the presentation, comprehensive plan consistency. And I'll try to go through this fairly quickly. The future land use for the site is general commercial. So that's the red here. The general commercial is defined in policy 1.1.14. Talks about properties that have been developed, have received approval prior to the adoption of the comprehensive plan. So as I said, this was first rezoned to commercial by Lee County. And then the second portion of the policy talks about appropriate uses. And just point out, mixed residential and commercial use in plan developments is identified as an appropriate use, and that's exactly what we are proposing. Policy 1.1.3 from your future land use element talks about height, that the actual allowable height for any given property will be based on consideration of compatibility with surrounding existing land uses. So again, we're reducing the height to two stories, which will be more consistent with the comp plan. Allowable uses, as I already mentioned, multifamily residential is allowed by the general commercial, future land use. Objective 1.11 talks about level of service standards. And just to point out here that we are reducing impacts to public facilities with the reduction in the number of units. And there is capacity available, potable water, sanitary sewer, solid waste, and we've provided letters to that effect. Your transportation element, policy 1.1.8, also talks about adopted level of service. And we again are reducing impacts with the reduction in the number of units. And we provided a transportation analysis that identified no level of service issues for adjacent roadways. Housing element, policy 1.1.1, talks about a range of residential densities to accommodate existing and anticipated population growth. This request provides an area for residential development to accommodate that anticipated growth. It's an infill parcel. It's surrounded by development, and it was previously approved for multifamily use. Policy 1.1.2 talks about a range of housing types. So again, we're providing townhouse-style development and a planned development in a mix of commercial and residential uses, which is consistent with this policy. Then these two objectives from the infrastructure element talk about acceptable levels of service for potable water, sanitary sewer, which I already mentioned. From your conservation and coastal management element, policy 7.2.2, talks about open space requirements for large developments, which we have more than 10 acres, so we are technically a large development. We must provide 50% of the open space as an indigenous native vegetation. So that's that 2.4 acres that I mentioned earlier. And we are providing that preserve as a single contiguous area. Policy 7.4.1 talks about how you will protect listed species. Identifying the habitat, mapping the habitat, adopting a management plan. And we have provided all of those things with our application. The listed species that we do have on site is gopher tortoises. And consistent with this policy, we will protect those burrows on site that we can and relocate them off-site to a mitigation bank if we cannot. This is just a graphic site plan. It's got a little less detail on it than that master concept plan. Maybe makes it a little bit easier to read. So again, the existing stormwater management lakes, gated entry. These are the buildings. And the preserve to the east. This is a conceptual elevation. As I said, we have six and seven-unit buildings, so this would be a seven-unit building. We keep talking about multifamily residential. We are technically multifamily, but this is more of a townhouse-style development. So each unit will have a garage and a driveway associated with that garage. And we've also provided massing to differentiate the different units. So again, it's more of a townhouse style. And this is just the rear elevation for those buildings. All right, we're going to talk about deviations.
Oh, one minute. Are you able to hear okay? Having a hard time?
Oh, sorry.
I have to ask you to speak up a little bit more, because I want to be sure.
I apologize.
I noticed she's concentrating very hard, so...
That's okay. Don't apologize. Go ahead.
All right. As you know, as part of a planned development, we can ask for deviations from certain sections of the code. And I'm going to be referring back to the master concept plan as I walk through these. And they're shown with numbers on the master concept plan, so one through seven. And before I get into the details of each one, these all relate back to that change in design. So we're going from the more vertically intrusive, visually intrusive, four stories, 50 feet, to more compatible two-story buildings. But that does require more horizontal area. And the other thing is that, as I just mentioned, though we are technically multifamily, it's more of a townhouse-style development. So some of the regulations that relate to multifamily development may not apply to our project. Deviation one is from section 3417, which requires a minimum setback of 30 feet from any habitable structure to the on-site preserve to allow a minimum rear setback of 15 feet to the principal structure and eight feet to an accessory building, and a minimum 10-foot setback to the principal structure. So we did talk about this a little already when I talked about the fence that we had provided. So it would be adjacent to the preserve areas. And I should mention here that we only have balconies on the second floor. There's no patio or anything on the first floor, so that setback to the eight feet to the accessory balcony that's only on the second floor. And again, it will be provided... We will be providing a 42-inch, three-and-a-half-foot decorative fence between the buildings and the preserve that will go from lake to lake. There will also be signage to identify the preserve and that there are gopher tortoises within that preserve. And the structural barrier of a fence will protect the preserve to a greater degree than the minimum code requirements. And I also want to point out that all of our activities, the amenity center, the sidewalks, they're all internal to the site. There's nothing adjacent to the preserves. And I'll show you a graphic of that fence a little bit later on. Deviation two is from section 41894, which requires a minimum 25-foot setback from bodies of water to allow a minimum 20-foot setback from the existing retention pond. So this would only apply to the buildings adjacent to the stormwater management lakes, so these four buildings. And we've provided a cross-section to show how that would work. And we did work closely with staff in order to develop that cross-section. So there will be 18 feet at a 10-to-1 slope, so relatively flat, and two feet with a retaining wall. And again, the balconies are only on the second floor, so that is 20-foot clear area. Deviation three, and I apologize, there's a lot of text on that slide. Start with the definition. Section 3302 defines the kind of road you can have based on the kind of development that you are doing. So for 108 multifamily units, per the code, we would provide a 40-foot, what's called a right-of-way. And what we are requesting is to build the road as allowed for 50 or fewer multifamily units, so 20 feet of pavement width. And again, this is a loop road. So half your trips are going to go north, half your trips are going to go south. So in reality, it only serves 54 units in each direction. And we've provided traffic calming. Those narrow street widths do provide a level of traffic calming. The wider the street, the faster that you drive. We do have those raised paver elevated crosswalks, which will also slow traffic down. And we've also designed this with 90-degree turns, as you can see, rather than a loop. And that does slow people down. You basically have to stop before you can turn. And this deviation has been approved... Previously, it was approved for the terraces to the south. And these next three deviations all relate to the fact, again, that this is a townhouse-style development, although it's technically multifamily. So what we're asking for with this deviation is to allow stacking of vehicles. And that means a vehicle in the driveway and a vehicle in the garage. And that would be typical for a single-family development. And again, each unit does have a garage and driveway. So it's not like an apartment building where you'd have a commercial-style parking lot. Obviously, you wouldn't want people to stack their vehicles there. And deviation five from section 3-62 prohibits backing of vehicles into the street. Again, this is a private gated loop roadway, low volumes of traffic, low speed, and we provided all those items for traffic calming. Deviation six is from a section of code that requires for multifamily development that we provide central dumpsters and rec... we provide central dumpsters and recyclable containers. And again, each unit here is gonna have their own driveway, so we are asking to do curbside pickup instead, and that has been approved by Lee County Solid Waste Division. All right, deviation seven, let me demonstrate this on the MCP. This is the area we're talking about right here. So this cul-de-sac on the north. The code requires if you have a road, if you're putting in a road, a drive, a parking area, and it's less than 125 feet from a residential subdivision, you have to provide, I'll just read this to you, a solid wall, or a combination berm and solid wall, not less than eight feet in height, not less than 25 feet from the abutting property, and landscaped with a minimum of five trees and 18 trubs per 100 lineal feet. And what we are proposing is a double row hedge planted at three foot on center, to be maintained at three foot high along the north side of the cul-de-sac. So we think that's gonna blend in much more harmoniously with the preserve, rather than putting in a wall. And it will also provide that protection to Lime Tree Park residents from headlight So all deviations were recommended for approval by staff and the zoning board. Let me go very quickly through the development standards, these are also on the master concept plan. So again, we're reducing the height to 35 feet, two stories. So the minimum building setbacks, 19 feet from the back of curb, 10-foot side setback. The preserve setbacks, as we talked about, were the deviation from, to a principal building, 15-foot, accessory eight-foot, to a water body 20-foot. And then, as you remember, this is part of the overall North Bay Village commercial plan development. And these are the setbacks to the CPD boundary. So to the north, we have 80 feet to Lime Tree Park. To the east in Highland Woods, we have 58 feet. And to the south, we have 13 feet to the terraces. This is an existing cross-section from our property to Highland Woods. So this is the existing condition on our site. It's a scrub, pines, palmettos, oak trees. These are existing power lines. There's a fence on the Highland Woods side of the property. They have these, this is their landscape buffer, buffer of Cuban laurels, and then just a typical single-family home within Highland Woods. And we did meet with Highland Woods HOA Board back in August, just to be good neighbors, tell them about what we were planning to do, and see if they had any questions. And the concern that they had was with the buffer, the landscape buffer on their side. So those Cuban laurels are probably about 20 years old, gotten a little laggy. There's not really a visual barrier from up to about five feet in height. So what we committed to was to plant a hedge on their property to put in that understory.
So just to be clear, you said there's no visual barrier above five feet presently?
No, below five feet.
Cuban laurels are above five feet?
Right.
So there's a visual barrier above that?
Yes.
With the Cuban laurels?
Yes.
Okay. So there wasn't any visual barrier below five feet? That's why we agreed to plant the hedge row there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And this shows a 50-foot cross-section for the preserve, and that is the preserve at its narrowest width. So this really only applies to these two buildings and a portion of this third building. So above that, the preserve widens out and it has more width. And this is a decorative fence that I had mentioned, this is what that will look like. And we're adding additional landscaping here, palmettos and grasses, just to make that fence blend into the preserve. And again, the fence will run lake to lake. And this is the fence here on the plan view. Can just talk a little bit about the maintenance of the preserve. Obviously, we will remove any exotic vegetation. There will be selective pruning of some of the vegetation to reduce the risk of wildfire. There will also be selective maintenance to enhance gopher tortoise habitat. We will also do supplemental planting of gopher tortoise forage, so the tortoises have something good to eat. And as I mentioned earlier, they will, the burrows will either be maintained on-site or relocated to an offsite mitigation bank. And the southern portion of the preserve, as I mentioned earlier, is part of our water management system, so there will be no tortoises kept within that southern portion of the preserve. So to conclude my presentation, the request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Benita Plan and the provisions of the city's land development code. And the request is compatible with existing residential uses. All right, and now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, I'd like to have, uh, excuse me, Tom McLean come up.
Yeah, I did.
If that's your real name.
Well, um, as Mr. Montgomery told you, I'm Tom, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm Tom McLean with Holmontez.
Like I said, I'm never gonna live it down.
Touche.
Yeah.
Now we're even. Um, yes, my name is Tom McLean, I represent Holm, or I represent our landowner, and I work with Holmontez. I'm a civil engineer, and I've done most of the civilian engineering design in this site.
Tom, would you go ahead and briefly describe the water management system that's being proposed for the project?
I asked that. Would you mind? Oh, it's right here, sorry. All right, I'm caveman again, which way do I, what do I push? Um, right there is. All right. Um, we've committed to basically the same design that was previously done. If you notice, there's a, um... The preserve runs along the east side of the property. We have a larger area here where that's the highest quality of the, of the preserve area. That's our, our gopher tortoise relocation area, if they can fit onsite, if not offsite. But south of that has always been considered a dry detention area. So if you see this black line, this is the stormwater management basin boundary. So we're gonna keep that portion inside the boundary, just similar to the way it was before. But our drainage paths are basically to culverts within the, I'm sorry, inlets within the road, culvert system connecting the lakes. Oh, can you hear me okay? And I, our control structure here is in this north lake. It discharges through a pipe to this indigenous area and out to US 41. And again, we'll keep that same drainage path that was previously designed and permitted.
Tom, you had heard Paula talk about the guest parking. Um, can you describe that a little bit more?
Sure. It's, it's a little tough to see, but on each one of these, actually, go to the, uh, let's see here. Let me go back. Let me go back. Go to the master concept plan. It's a little difficult to see, but if you notice, each one of these buildings has driveways out that connect the, the garages to the, to the access street. The driveways on the outside units have space for an additional unit, or additional parking space. So we're providing a portion of our guest parking, the 10% of the overall required parking, as guest parking at each building. And then the remainder are made up of, uh, parallel parking spaces in this location, this location here, and this location down there. At the end of the day, we have, I wanna say, an additional 20 or so parking spaces required over the, the minimum requirement.
Um, has the development portion of this site been previously cleared?
Yes, sir. If you look, basically, everything within this... Were you asking another question? I'm sorry. Butters, I'm sorry about that. But everything within this line that I'm kinda tracing, and it kinda comes out here a little bit, has been previously cleared and filled. The preserve areas are, remain in their native state.
And...
Have not been cleared or filled.
One final question. There was a deviation that was referenced, I think it's deviation seven, about a potential wall versus vegetative buffer being constructed on the north side of the project. Yes, right in that area. Um, would it be possible, do we own that north preserve area?
Yes, sir. This is part of the, the North Bay Village out to the, the west.
Okay, so is it fair to say that, that we could not comply with this provision regardless? Because we don't own property within 25 feet of the property line?
That's correct. We'd also be asking to be placing a berm and a wall within a preserve area.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything further, Mr. McLean, unless you have questions.
Okay, good.
I think I'm gonna ask Bethany Brochus to come up now and just spend a moment with you. There's a, there's gopher tortoises on the site. I just wanted her to describe what she found during the course of her site visit and what the plan is in terms of, of any potential relocation or onsite relocation.
Okay.
Hi, good morning. For the record, my name's Bethany Brochus. I'm with Passerell and Associates. As Chuck indicated, there's a large number of gopher tortoises on the project's site. The last survey that was conducted was November of 2014, and we found nearly 100 burrows, 97 to be exact, onsite. Now, the majority of them were located on the western portion of the site, which is currently proposed for development. However, there were some burrows still located within the onsite preserve area. And our intention is to retain as many tortoises as possible within the onsite preserve area and locate any excess tortoises to an offsite mitigation bank. Excuse me. FWC, the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, has density requirements that we'll have to abide by, and they'll actually dictate how many tortoises we can maintain onsite, and how many will have to be relocated to an offsite mitigation bank.
I don't have anything further unless you all have questions. I just wanted to get that in the record in case there was questions.
Counsel, any questions up to this moment? All right.
And then I have one more witness, Ted Trish with TR Transportation. I'm gonna ask Ted to just, um, uh, go through a couple of the transportation issues that have been raised.
Good morning, counsel. Ted Trish with TR Transportation Consultants. Just a couple of brief points. In the analysis that we conducted from the transportation perspective, we are reducing the trip generation potential of this site by reducing the unit count from 112 to 108. Our, our analysis of US 41 indicates that it will be at a level service B, as in boy, at the buildout of this project. We, we projected out five years to look at that level service analysis. But more importantly, the, some recent developments regarding the intersection of Lime Tree and US 41, that, that intersection has been studied a number of times over the last four or five years for future traffic signal installation at that location. It is a full median opening. You could turn left and right out of Lime Tree, as well as North Bay Drive on the west side. FDOT did conduct a warrant study and did approve the installation of a signal at that location. So FDOT has jurisdiction over US 41. They approve any future signals that go on their roadways, and they have done so. So we're now in the process, working, uh, the applicant, as well as the other property owners, including Benita Bay on the west side, as well as all the property owners on the east side, are now getting together to determine how that project will be funded, because it, it is a privately funded signal, so it has to be paid for by, by private dollars. So there is a meeting, I believe, scheduled for later this week, basically to kick that off, to get the, the next steps, or to, for the property owners to work out an agreement to determine who's gonna pay what, what proportionate share for each of those, and then submit design plans to FDOT for review and approval, and then hiring a contractor to construct the signal. So that, that process is now started and will be getting under ways. That's really the only comments I had. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Again, Mr. Trish is here and available to answer questions if you have any.
There is a, the statement there, it says, "An applicant will be responsible for his proportionate fair share." That's not exactly true, right? So you're not really gonna be held responsible for that, but you plan on cooperating and paying for what you consider to be your...
That's true.
Actually, um, actually, there is a...
I mean, legally, there's nothing that binds you to that, or is there?
No.
Well, I, I mean, there...
If they wish to have a development order, um, they would have to pay their proportionate fair share as a site-related improvement. Now, that would be a calculation that Mr. Trish has not run yet, and staff has not reviewed or approved yet. That would come at time of development order. So we would look at all the ambient traffic nearby and then determine how much...
I'm just, that was just a statement on your, uh...
Yes.
Whatever this is right here, on your presentation. I'm just trying to get to counsel whether or not that is something that's binding on you at this point in time. I know it's something you, you intend to do.
Yes.
But... I think a prop share payment is binding from the standpoint of, of being able to get a development order on this particular instance.
Okay, good, thank you.
And because the warrant has been approved by FDOT, then the project is kind of out there. And so from our standpoint, I, I think we're obligated to pay a proportionate fair share of the cost of that signalization.
Okay, thank you very much. Good. Counsel, any other questions for Ted or anybody? All right, good.
And what I wanted to say was, you kind of, kind of hit upon, one of the things I wanted to say. There is a condition here that's 9A that deals with the traffic signal at Lime Tree and 41. And we're participating in the, if you will, the private sector meetings on that to determine, um, the cost that each person will bear, or each entity will bear, and to move forward and get that signal done. And that's part of the, the, um, conditions in here, that we will pay our proportionate fair share of that cost. With respect to 9B, that's the condition that I ask you to revise by inserting that the applicant will pay his proportionate fair share of the cost of the construction of that turn lane. And that completes our case in chief. We appreciate your time, and certainly, again, if you have questions, we have all the, the experts that are here and are happy to try and answer them for you.
Thank you very much, Chuck. Good job. Hello.
Good morning, counsel. For the record, Jacqueline Genson with Community Development. I'll go ahead and make my presentation brief and just hit some of the high points. Staff is in agreement with the applicant's presentation. Again, as I stated with the case history, staff recommended approval and, and so does zoning board with slight modifications to the conditions. Some of the items that were brought up at the zoning board, which were zoning board concerns, was deviation one. Uh, one of the zoning board members had a concern about the building setback being so close to the preserve. But again, staff felt very comfortable with this condition, with safeguards in place in terms of decorative fencing and signage, that that preserve would remain protected. Uh, the other concern was the traffic signal at North Bay Village Drive, North Bay Drive and Lime Tree area. And as applicant stated, there is a meeting this Wednesday with private property owners to discuss the signal. So that is occurring this week. Uh, the deceleration right turn lane at North Bay Village Drive. Um, staff is in agreement with the modification to the condition. I do believe that that is fair. Um, and whether or not the applicant wishes to, at time of development order, fund the entire turn lane and ask for road impact fee credits, that is council's decision to go ahead and do that, if they go ahead and install the entire turn lane at their cost. Uh, gopher tortoises, questions did come up, but as the applicant explained, and staff agreed to that there is protections for the indigenous area and the tortoises, and that they would be relocated accordingly with FWC guidelines. Uh, the other concern was the internal sidewalk circulation, but as the applicant stated, they submitted a revised master concept plan, which promotes internal circulation, and then a connection to the commercial section to the west. So, um, those concerns have been addressed in the modified master concept plan. Public comment concerns, again, some of them are reoccurring. Uh, the traffic signal, the deceleration lane into the first south entrance. Security, as the applicant stated, there was a concern about security and whether or not this could be gated. And again, because of the environmental sensitivity of the indigenous preserve, both staff didn't feel that that was necessarily appropriate for the, the thriving nature of that preserve. And again, the city were really trying to promote interconnectivity, and that kind of goes against the, the principles of that. So we didn't feel that that was necessarily appropriate. Another concern that came up is, um, school bus locations for pickup and drop-off of students. I do have a call into the school district on how that is assigned, but that was a concern that came up. However, I think with the sidewalk connection point, maybe that some of those concerns could be alleviated. But that's usually not something that we really coordinate with the school district on at this level. But I did want to bring that to your attention, that, that was a concern that came up. Um, and again, the external sidewalk connectivity. There is an external sidewalk now proposed to connect the multifamily to the commercial. Um, there was some concerns by some of the Lime Tree residents about people and vehicle conflicts along the lakes to the north, but again, uh, the site's kinda, there's constraint with the way the lake's already designed and whatnot, but at least we have connectivity to the way. But at least we have connectivity to the west, to the commercial development. I went over this with the zoning board. There were some slight modifications and corrections that I needed to make to the record in the zoning board document and the staff report, and those, these are the changes. So just so you're aware, we remade those changes at the zoning board hearing. Ms. McMichaeler went over the location and the zoning history and the land use, so there's no need to go over that again. Master concept plan, again, this is the older plan, so please disregard that. Conditions of approval, again, just going over the ones that were brought up relative to the zoning board hearing. So the environmental and the indigenous. And as I explained, we went ahead and proposed conditions to protect the preserve further with the decorative fencing. The traffic impacts, we went ahead and made changes to those and recommended conditions so we could go ahead and safeguard the public interest. And again, as the applicant testified, those items would be addressed at time of development order. And the reason why they didn't come up right now is because at zoning, the traffic impact statements, the requirements that we analyze and look at is different. It's more of a higher-level detail. And then at time of development order, we get more into a more detailed analysis, dealing with turn lanes and things of that nature. Again, I already went over the traffic impact statements and why we look at traffic impact statements differently at zoning versus development order. And again, as the applicant stated, this was already a previously approved project for multifamily at an increased intensity. And here, they're reducing the intensity, although it's by three units, it's still a reduction in intensity. Already went over those conditions, some of those changes. Deviations, again, just hitting the two that came up at hearing. Deviation one dealt with the setback to the preserve. But again, we went ahead and put in conditions relative to fencing and fire protection, so the buildings could be closer to, to the preserve but still be protected, and the buildings still be protected for fire safety. And deviation seven dealt with the security of installing a wall. But again, because of the indigenous preserve, we went ahead and proposed a condition that there would be supplemental plantings that are compatible with the preserve to add that extra level of headlight shielding. And again, with the findings, there's ten criteria that we had to find to make our recommendation of approval. We felt the applicant's request with the conditions of approval didn't meet those findings, and that's why we recommended approval. And I have Mr. Kirby with me, if you have any questions on the environmental. Have Mr. Sweet with me, if you have questions about the road and ownership, 'cause that came up at the hearing. And I'm here as well for any general questions.
All right, Jackie, good. Counsel, you have any questions this time, before we go to the public comment? Any questions? Thank you, Jackie. Bill, could you turn the lights up for us, please? And at this time, we'll go to the parties of record. And we'll just go ahead and start with Rick Steinmeier. Rick Steinmeier.
Yes, for the record, Rick Steinmeier. My major concern is, is the safety of the people on forty-one and Lime Tree and the southern entrance. A traffic light and a slowdown lane would certainly benefit the, the shopping center's development, the shopping center access and this development. Building seventeen buildings will greatly impact the traffic. There might be thirty cars for one, each day for each building, contractors and concrete trucks and this and that. A two-story walk-up, whatever you call it, is not gonna be, it's almost like an affordable housing project. People fifty-five and older are not gonna walk up a flight of stairs to go to bed. I'm sorry about that. But so this is gonna lend itself to low-cost housing with many children, many school buses. And again, it goes back to the safety concern. I would prefer that the light be put in place before this development even starts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we'll go to Bill Kovitz. Bill, are you here? No? Okay, Brian Martin. Let's see him. Let's see, Conceda Carino? Probably got that wrong, but probably would've recognized it. And Ronald Kerr. And that's all I have for parties of record at this time. And let's see, got anything else, Chuck? Do you wanna wrap up?
Just one thing. The comment about low-cost housing, I think, is out of place. I mean, there is nothing to indicate that the applicant has any intention to do anything of that nature. It's going to be a typical Benita Springs development. It has gone overboard in terms of landscaping, connectability, walkability. You've seen elevations of the project. There's no reason to believe that what Mr. Steinmeier is alluding to is, is going to happen here, or that it has any relevance to this proceeding.
Okay. A question for you, Jackie, just before we wrap it up here. Would, would you consider this to be a reduction of intensity and density as well? I think it's pretty obvious it is, but would you consider this to be...
It is, by three units. I mean, it is miniscule, but yes, it is a reduction.
Reduction from what it was, right?
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, questions?
Thanks for meeting with Highland Woods. Is there anybody here from Highland Woods? Are there any lingering concerns of any, any level?
We, we don't, and I don't mean to speak for somebody if they're here, but we don't know of any. We, we met with them. The one issue that was raised was the buffering along their western property line. And that issue was evident because of the, the, if you will, the space below the Cuban laurel branches and the ground. And that's why we agreed to put in the, the hedge in there. But moreover, that's covered. And if you may recall, the elevations that we showed you, it's, it's a fairly thick area on the west side of their property line between our buildings and their buildings. So you've got the preserve, plus you've got their Cuban laurels and hedge row, plus you've got their own vegetation in the yard. So that was the only thing that was raised that I can recall.
Okay.
Yes, Audrey.
Counsel, if you wish for staff to ever have to enforce the five-foot hedge requirement for Highland Woods, I would suggest an amendment to section seven of the zoning ordinance. Condition seven is all the already indigenous areas, and just adding in there, or we could add as a new condition, a five-foot hedge will be planted as a visual buffer for the property adjacent to the eastern portion of the property, Highland Woods, in the existing Highland Woods buffer. So that that way, if there's ever a problem with that buffer, we can enforce it. If you recall, we had some problems recently with Eden Bridge, where we did not have language as to a buffer, and then wanting to do enforcement because it was something that prior staff had done.
Okay, Chuck.
It's not a problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. Anything else? Anybody got any other questions? Any questions? What's your, what's your pleasure?
I do have one question.
Oh, go ahead.
What, what business issue drove this decision to go from multi-stories down to the smaller units?
I, I think it's just a change in developers, if you will. I mean, in the, it, it, I'm sure has something to do with what the market is today versus what it was four, five, or six years ago. It's a different market out there, and I, I don't mean to speak for the applicant necessarily about that. But I have to think that if you look at what's being constructed today versus what may have been constructed previously, they're typically lower units in this style versus the bigger buildings. So other than that, I really can't, can't speak to it.
And the deviations you're requesting on, on this particular change of plan, would those deviations have been required if you'd stuck with the original plan?
Probably not, because you've got, I mean, keep in mind that, that while the buildings were much larger, you only had four of them versus what we have today, but there was about twenty-eight units in those other buildings apiece. And so you had a, you had a very real potential concern about building massing, which you don't really have so much today. But as a consequence, and like we tried to explain, it was more of a vertical project versus the horizontal project that we've got today. Now, certainly, there's some, what I would consider to be pretty minor deviations that are being requested. But I think overall, you're going to find that, that you've, that what is being proposed is a much more compatible project back there than, than the fifty-foot structures that were previously approved. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, and I, as I recall, the other zoning meeting that we had on this and the approvals, I mean, the, the real, not bone of contention, but the real concerns there were because of the height of the buildings and because of whether that matched up when you consider Lime Tree next door. If, if we'd have been presented this as an option, we would've, we would've went with this one. I mean, that's just all there was to it, so.
The, the other thing to keep in mind, and I'm, I didn't mean to interrupt, but the other thing to keep in mind is there was a commercial project back there initially with fairly large buildings also. And we've, we've gone away from that, reduced the traffic, if you will. And so it's gone from a hundred K office area to basically a hundred and eight multifamily units at two-story versus the fifty-foot structures that we had before.
Okay, kick this off. I'd make a motion to approve as amended. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Yes?
I just wanna make sure. Condition nine B, Mr. Bassinet requested that it be, the sentence changed to, if a turn lane is required, the applicant will be responsible for their proportionate fair share for the cost and design of the turn lane, as opposed to shall be responsible, as opposed to proportionate fair share. The difference is, of course, they'd be on the boat for the whole thing.
Right, and staff's on board with that, so I would make that part of the motion now. Everybody, everyone, okay? All right, any other questions? Roll call, please. Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay. You have anything else, please? Yeah, good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And meeting is adjourned.